138 Waterway.
No, not yet.
Not yet.
Which one do you want me to do?
That one, but we're not on yet.
Oh.
Now we are. Evening at 6:00 PM, February 10th. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. First, I'd like to announce that this hearing is being televised live on local Mashpee TV. Next, if we could all rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, absent tonight are board members Ron Bondvi and Scott Goldstein. So, sitting on tonight's first hearing, the three regular board members, as well as associates, Jim Gould and Brad Pittsley. Jim, if you'd read the first hearing.
Under new hearings, 138 Waterway. Owners Brian M. and Nicole K. Clark are requesting a modification to special permit SP 01-6 to replace an existing spa and trellis sitting on a raised patio with an in-ground swimming pool and a spa of a similar but larger size.
Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Corrane, and I have the pleasure of representing the clocks in connection with the application that you have before you this evening. As I am wont to do, I have provided you with a written outline of the summary of my remarks together with a copy of the field card relating to the property, a copy of the proposed plan and a reduced version, and a copy of a plan which was approved by the board back in 2001. I have put an X through the spa because on a revised version of that plan which I've provided to John, that spa does not show up on that revised plan. In addition, I have provided the board with a copy of the special permit/finding decision going back to 2001 and a copy of a variance decision going back to 2001. I also have asked Tom Bunker of BSS Design and Engineering, who is here with me this evening. Tom is the one that handled all the calculations on the proposed plan and did the engineering on that plan in the event the board would have any questions for Tom. The board, I'm sure, is very familiar with the 138 Waterway property and familiar with what has been occurring on Waterway over the years in terms of numerous knockdown and replacements. This property in 2001 was a knockdown and a replacement. It sits on a 17,000-plus square foot lot, has 112 feet of frontage on Waterway, and there is a two-plus-story, single-family residential dwelling currently situated on that lot together with a Title V system. The dwelling is non-conforming, as is the lot. The lot is non-conforming because it doesn't have the required frontage that is applicable today, which is 150 feet. It doesn't have the square footage which is applicable today, which is 40,000 square feet. The structure itself does not meet the required setbacks from the road and also from the side yards. Therefore, the structure itself is also a non-conforming structure. Essentially, what the clocks are seeking to do is to modify that plan that was approved by the Board of Appeals back in 2001. The conditions that are on the plan in 2001 are different from the conditions that are on the ground currently because back in 2001, the Board of Appeals approved a plan which John may have there and which I've attached, a reduced version, which included the installation of an in-ground swimming pool and a masonry pool patio around that swimming pool. And you can see on that plan where I put an X through the spa, that plan, with the exception of the spa that's on that plan, is the plan that was approved by the zoning board of appeals back in 2001. So you can see the swimming pool on that plan approved back in 2001. That pool, however, was not built. Instead, apparently, the owners decided that they would merely install a portion of the patio, stone patio, and they placed a hot tub and a trellis above that patio. However, as I suggest to the board, the current owners would prefer to have the in-ground pool, and as such, we have an application before the board to modify that permit plan that was approved by the zoning board of appeals back in 2001. A lot has occurred since 2001 in terms of how the board interprets its various definitions of structure, and we have taken an extremely conservative approach in what we have presented to the board in terms of the dimensional characteristics. We have suggested to the board, and you can see that this proposed pool is essentially within the same area as the pool and patio that was approved by the board in 2001. What that results in, given today's interpretation of the terminology structure, is that there is lot coverage of 29.8 percent. Now, as I said, we have taken an extremely conservative approach in terms of calculating that 29.8 percent, in that we have included all of the area which is south of the stone retaining wall that you see in the photographs and that you see on the plan. It may very well be that a portion of this area on the north-westerly side of the proposed pool may not in fact be lot coverage because it's really not being held back by that retaining wall, but was actually built into the hill that was there. But, as I said, we chose to approach this from a very conservative approach and have included everything, which is on the dwelling side of that retaining wall as structure. And that is because the board now interprets a raised patio as a structure. Back in the day, there was a different interpretation by the board as to whether or not that constituted lot coverage or not and was a structure or not. Today, the board does interpret it that way. As I've indicated in my remarks, the pool that was approved by the board back then was about 460 square feet. The pool that is being proposed is about 578 square feet if you include the six-by-six spa area and the so-called infinity basin, which is part of the design of this particular In order to accommodate that slight increase in the size of the pool, we have reduced the hardscape by substituting planting beds for the concrete masonry patio along the and around the pool. And Tom can elaborate on that if the board has additional questions. But in essence, we are maintaining essentially the same degree of lot coverage that was approved back in 2001 by the zoning board of appeals when it granted the special permit relief and the variance relief. However, the dimensions are different because today, the board considers, as I said, raised patios as structures when they were not considered to be part of the structure slash lot coverage calculation back at that time. If the board would like to hear from Tom, he can explain to you how he brought in the planting beds to make up the difference for that small area of the infinity pool, essentially 87 square feet, I think he told me, which extends beyond the semicircular stone wall that was shown in the pictures and was used to retain the area where the patio and current hot tub is situated. So maybe, Tom, you can just give the board a quick view of that.
For the record, my name is Tom Bunker. Kevin was right. He was, it's actually 84 square feet on the plans that had in there. We call these the fuzzy lines here are the Phoenix Group Plan, what we inserted into our drawing here. So this curved line is what was approved and what was built, except that this wall does not go out. These are the steps going down right here, and there's no wall going out there, but it was approved to have this cheek wall here and this wall. And so from this curved wall out to this squared off wall here and back is 84 square feet. So in a very simplified fashion is how I looked at it today to try to explain it. It's getting bigger by 84 square feet toward the water. And so the green is where we show the planting beds. And when I just looked at it now, in this, when I did it before, I always add a little bit, subtract a little bit, and it was confusing to me and everybody. When I just looked at it in a simplified way, I realized that frankly, we didn't have enough planting bed to make up for the 84 square feet, where this was about 1 and 1/4 feet wide, and this would actually have to be 1 and 3/4 feet wide, this planting bed. And this planting bed, it'd have to make a little return on it to get up the same 84 square feet to offset the 84 square feet of the retaining wall going out beyond.
So you added 84 square feet by adding in a retaining wall that wasn't on the original plan?
That's correct.
And then you're taking away?
Taking away 84 square feet. So this 84 square feet that's being added isn't all raised patio because some of it, some of it and what's being added is planting bed here and here.
What's the net result?
The net result is zero, going out 84 square feet and taking 84 square feet out of it, putting back into planting.
Kevin, I have a question. On the original plan that was approved says it's a screen porch. Is that what this section is with the trellis right now?
Uh, the trellis is the...
Because I don't see the trellis on here.
This is the trellis.
Right. And where is, where's this screen porch?
I think it's probably right in, considered to be right in here.
Okay.
Or maybe they have...
Well, the question is...
Looks like it's at the corner of the...
I don't see a trellis on here as approved.
No, the trout, they, rather than build the in-ground pool, they put a trellis there and the hot tub, okay?
In the area that had been approved for a pool?
In the area that had been approved for a pool. They, instead of, instead of building the pool...
The in-ground pool and they chose to...
So that plan that was approved doesn't match what was actually done?
Apparently so.
But the town never signed off. Did they come out and sign off on it?
I'm not sure there was a need to sign off on it, really. What's the, instead of building an in-ground pool, you put a hot tub on the ground?
Well, I mean, it's supposed, it's supposed to match. I mean, it's as simple as that.
What can I tell you? They chose not to build the pool, you know?
I would hope that they told somebody.
I would hope they would too, but I can't, I wasn't there. I had nothing to do with that proposal, so that was done by the Phoenix Group and I can't remember the name of the contractor who did the job, but instead of...
Children's Development.
But instead of building the pool which they had approval for, they chose not to build the pool. And I don't think necessarily that you could always come back and build a pool later.
Well...
If you have, if you have a shed on a plan, you decide not to put the shed on the ground, I don't even think you'd have to come back to the board and say, "We changed the plan by not putting the shed on it."
Well, no, I think you should, I think they should be going to the building department
They probably should have.
And saying, "Hey, we're changing our plan."
Well, we're still within the footprint of what was...
Well, I understand that, but as you know, the plan is supposed to match.
I won't argue with, I won't argue with that. And that's what we're trying to do now. We're trying to make the plan more of a match because we're putting in the in-ground swimming pool now that wasn't put in in 2001 after it had been approved.
Well, I think there's a lot of things that weren't done. We have some conservation comments.
This has been approved, by the way.
Yeah, but there's a caveat to it.
Oh, okay.
Because the stuff that was approved was never finished off.
Oh, the original stuff?
Right. This is dated, it's an email from Caitlin...
Cattaree.
How do you pronounce the last name?
Cattaree.
Caitlin Cattaree, Tuesday, February 9th. Okay. And it says, it's regarding tonight's hearing. Mary Ann, the DEP permit number SE 43-2839 for 138 Waterway has not been recorded at the registry of deeds as of the 9th of February this year. Also, the engineered plans submitted to the ZBA have, has revisions not reflected in Concom's copy consisting of comments, added Phoenix Group Plan and adjusted patio limit December 30th, 2015. Per the Chapter 172 Special Conditions for SE 43-2839, any deviations made or intended to be made from the plans cited as the plan of record in the Order of Conditions shall require in advance one of the following. Number one, an amended order of conditions. Number two, a new notice of intent, or, number three, an administrative approval from the commission that the deviation is not so substantial as to require one or two above. In any case, it's the owner's responsibility to apply for such amended order of conditions, new notice of intent, or written decisions. Therefore, we cannot sign off on the building permit till these issues have been resolved. Sincerely, Caitlin Cattaree.
Cattaree.
Cattaree. I'll give you that.
Yeah, that's fine. We have the order of conditions here. It has not been recorded yet. It was just obtained in December, and we fully understand that we are going to have to comply with the conditions of that order of conditions before being able to get them to sign off on building permits. Tom was involved in obtaining the Conservation Commission's order of conditions, and the plans that were approved are consistent with the plans that I submitted.
Okay, this one is from Andrew McManus, dated February 10th. Hi, Mary Ann. Yes, sorry, wrong attachment. Unfortunately, I deleted my comment, my comment copy for February 10th. Can't find it, no big deal. Comments are as follows. That the commission has already approved the work, pool replacing hot tub at 138 Waterway, no issues.
That was December 20, I mean, that was not, that was pre, I understand what that is, I've read it. That was, you read the wrong date. That was January 29th. Caitlin's was February 9th.
Correct. You are correct. The date of this email is February 29th, excuse me, January 29th, prior to Caitlin's email.
Tom can address that.
Okay, hold on one sec. This is from the inspections Department, Mike Mendoza, dated Tuesday, February 9th afternoon. So what I am gathering from this is that, number one, they've yet to record the DEP permit that was issued to them as of February 9th, 2016, that the plan submitted to the ZBA does not match the plan that was submitted to Conservation, which means that the application has to go back to Conservation Commission because the plan that they approved does not match the one that was submitted to the ZBA. Signed, Mike Mendoza, Building Commissioner. That's yesterday. Also from Mike, dated February 9th. To the members of the ZBA, please accept this report as the following ZBA cases. 138 Waterway, the other area is zoned R3 and is in a pre-contact archaeologically sensitive area listed as high sensitivity. The applicant is seeking a modification to remove an existing spa and replace it with an in-ground swimming pool and a spa. This department does not view an in-ground swimming pool, excuse me, does view an in-ground swimming pool as a structure, counts towards lot coverage. Sincerely, Mike Mendoza. Board of Health, no comments. We have a letter from, it was mailed to the zoning board without a return address, without an address on it, and a signature that is unreadable. And it says, "About hearing 21016 for 138 Waterway." They've got a picture here and a little line drawn that says lot line. And the person writes, "Dear zoning board, I'm not able to attend the meeting on Wednesday, February 10th. There is special permit for a home at 138 Waterway, but I am very concerned about protecting the neighborhood association access to the water that abuts this property. The previous owner had landscaped over their property line and essentially took over precious waterfront land that belonged to the neighborhood association. The above picture that was taken off a real estate website, Zillow, that has the property line listed, shows the yellow pipe that is down near the water line. The lot line markers are not at this pipe. The landscape for this home continues to cross over the lot line from the water to the street. Please, please have the homeowner restore this land back to the neighbors before they continue with any additional projects in their yard. We are counting on you to protect our rights to this space. Thank you." A name I can't read.
That's a private matter and doesn't have anything to do with the board.
I was going to make the same comment.
And I'd also show you that the reserved area, I suspect that they're talking about, is on the opposite side of the property. It's over here. And what we're dealing with is on the other side of the property.
I agree, it has nothing to do with us. They sent it to us, so I would read it into the record.
I think that's, that's an issue between the neighborhood association and the homeowner.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
All right.
I'll let, if the board will permit, Tom address the conservation issue comments.
Yes, thank you. The revisions to the plan, as shown, there's a revision block there, added Phoenix Group Plan and adjusted patio limit. This is where I added the Phoenix Group Plan, just put in this underlay showing the approved 2001 plan under what we're proposing. So that you didn't change the project at all. And the adjusted the patio limit, very little change, that's why I added the word "pea stone" and changed the lineup here. We'll bring this back, you know, I'm sure Drew will, you know, can do an administrative review.
Okay.
But adding this, this window, this viewport here to show the previously approved plan is not changing the project at all. But, you know, we'll go through this because, you know, maybe some changes or whatever. And we didn't record the order of conditions because sometimes you wait until they have several, when you're going to the Board of Appeals, you wait till they have the ZBA permit and the Conservation permit and just get them recorded at the same time.
Okay. I've talked to Mike Mendoza. He's not here tonight. He suggested we continue this until you clean up all those matters.
I'm not sure the Conserv, I mean, they have their order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, so I'm not quite sure. I asked Tom to put these inserts on the plan to try to give the Board of Appeals a better understanding of what it was that we were doing. So, as Tom has said, the project itself isn't, isn't changing. He just added these two details to the plan for my purposes so that you all could see exactly what it was that was previously approved and what we were doing. If, however, your inclination is to defer until he can get Drew's okay on that, we certainly can do that. I'm not sure when your meeting, again, I can, I am probably going to be away.
Two weeks.
I think at your next meeting.
February 24th.
Yeah, I will not be here. I'll be away.
We got a March 9th?
I will be back by March 9th.
I have two questions, just for my edification. The pea-stone area, is that considered part of the area that's drainage, or is that considered part of a structure?
Today, they consider it all, it's all considered structure.
All considered structure.
But what was approved was not pea-stone. What was approved was a masonry pool patio around the pool. When they did the, the hot tub, they had masonry, masonry around part of it and pea-stone around another part of it. But the masonry deck was approved for the original pool. And now, because, as you can see in the photos...
Yep.
This'll be easy. Today, everything above this wall, okay, is considered structure. That is an interpretation that was made by the building inspector prior to the current building inspector, who felt that because, because folks were building these raised patios rather than utilizing a deck, which is considered structure, he felt that these raised patios should be included as structures because of their height, and it was just a way of trying to get around utilizing a deck which would be considered to be lot coverage. So that interpretation was initiated by Mike Mendoza's predecessor. It's been adopted by the board, as I understand it, and that is why we have chosen to include everything on the house side of that wall as lot coverage and structure.
Thank you.
And that's why we're at the 29.8 percent.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Go ahead.
I don't have any real problems. The only problem I have is, is the conservation comments. The conservation comments are very, very clear as to what they're requesting or requiring when they say, "Any deviation made or intended to be made from the plans cited as the plan of record in the Order of Conditions shall require in advance one of the following," and those we've already read into the record, and the third one being one of the other two.
Yeah, that's taken right out of the order of conditions.
Right. Right. They, they quote chapter and verse from 172 of the special conditions.
That's fine, as I said, I asked Tom. There's been no change in the project as has been approved by the Conservation Commission. The only change, the only difference between this plan and the claim of the Conservation Commission has, is the two details that I asked Tom to add to the plan, not anticipating that I was going to get this kind of a reaction from the Conservation Commission, because quite frankly, neither of these details have anything to do with the order of conditions that they have approved or the project itself. But if the board is so inclined, we will certainly...
Let me suggest one thing also.
To the Conservation Commission.
You might want to check with Mike regarding that trellis and whether or not that should be on this plan, on your new plan, because...
But that trellis is being removed on the new plan.
Oh, it is? You yanking it out?
Yeah.
I have it shown on the plan.
Yeah, it's on there.
Removed existing spa and trellis.
Yep.
I'm looking at the old one.
That's the old one.
This one, right here.
All right.
Yep.
Good.
Is this owner the second owner?
Yes, I think they've...
Is this part of the situation where you have two owners doing two different things?
They were not the original owner of the property when these permits were granted.
Right.
So that's, that's part of the problem, I guess.
We all, we all know it.
Yeah, should have checked, right?
Things happen to get built without...
Yeah, an incumbent title.
Yeah. Happens every day, doesn't it?
Sure does.
The, you know, people may choose to do things or not do things that are, they have approval for, quite frankly, I mean, it's, you know, it's...
I understand.
They chose not to build a pool. The current owner would like, had, current owner has approval for it based upon the 2001 decision of the Board of Appeals and would like to replace what the previous owner wanted as a hot tub with a pool that was approved. It was a slight modification. The current owners of this property purchased this property in 2013, so there was at least one other owner.
In between?
Being in between the present owners and the developer, children development that got that plan approved, and perhaps there could have been more, but I haven't done a title examination to determine how many owners they have been. But my client purchased this property in October 2013.
So in essence, you're cleaning up stuff that precedes what your client...
Well, we're modifying, we're basically modifying it in terms of the cleaning up, if you're referencing that Conservation Commission comment, that's a plan that we submitted in connection with this project.
I see.
And the language of the Order of Conditions says that you're not supposed to change your plans.
Right.
And, and that may be my own stupidity, but I didn't have a, I didn't even give it a thought, quite frankly, that by adding a couple of details...
I did not suggest that, counsel.
To perhaps better explain what was going on, that it was going to raise this concern with the Conservation Commission, because the plan itself, in fact, I could have Tom take the detail off the plan, quite frankly, and then we would have a plan without the detail for the Board of Appeals, which is exactly the same as the plan that was approved by the Conservation Commission. And I do have three of those plans.
Those are the plans that Drew commented on originally?
That Drew wants. Yeah, he wants those.
He said he had no problem.
Yeah.
But it is, it's the same plan, with the exception that this plan has details. So I have three copies of this plan, I can submit it now.
Yeah, until I get some comments from them, Kevin.
But this is the plan they approved.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want to move forward until I get some positive comments from them.
Well, there's nothing left to comment on if I substitute these plans with plans that you have, which has those details on it. Because then they have, you have exactly the same plan that they approved.
Well, I understand, but that is the stuff that was submitted to them.
This was submitted.
Well, somehow they got that in there.
They got that only because I had that submitted to the Board of Appeals.
Kevin, I'm going to continue it, but thank you for trying.
I gave it a shot.
All right, would you like March 9th? Okay. Bill, would you like to make a motion?
March 9th? Is that what we do?
Yeah.
All right, I make a motion that we continue 138 Waterway, owners Brian M. and Nicole K. Cooks, requests...
Clock.
Clock.
Clock, excuse me, for, request for a modification to special permit SP-01-6 to replace an existing spa and trellis sitting on a raised patio with a, with an in-ground swimming pool and spa of similar si, of similar but larger size. Continue that to March 9th, 2016.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Back on the 9th.
Will you be back on the 9th?
I will be back on the 9th, but I'll be back on the 8th. And I don't think that the pool construction going around between now and then.
Not much happening around here. Well, thank you. Nice job, Bill.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. Nothing to sign, Mary Ann? All right. Where is the agenda? Why can't I find the agenda?
They have the original.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You can leave all the things.
All right. Jim, would you read the first other business?
Approved January 27th, 2016 minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, that's a motion, right?
That's a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. All right, Tom.
I'm making a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.